I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gauze Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location, you know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there would be some, you know, strong investment opportunities, for sure.
My name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Orchestra of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal, so, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nine to Two Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears. You don't put earbuds in and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, bootcamps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger, and a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home, and there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gauze Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so, you know, we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location, you know, we had lots of opportunity to potentially look at, you know, outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then, you know, our customer reach is about 45,000. So, you know, we're talking about lots of small communities, you know, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there would be some, you know, strong investment opportunities, for sure.
My name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Orchestra of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal, so, you know, I'm trying, I make new friends, I, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister, so, I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
Good evening, everyone. I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order. Town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaq, the unceded ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and it is, of course, our pleasure and privilege to be here. The only change to the agenda, as you'll notice under Business Rising, Unfinished Business, we're just deferring the procurement policy amendments to the March 27 meeting. That is the only change. Are there any other additions? None. Motion to approve the agenda circulated. Deputy Mayor Figueroa, seconded by Councilor McDonald, all those in favor. motion is carried. Announcements from members of council? Anything upcoming? Nothing. Next couple weeks, it's March break, there's lots of day camps at the LCLC, so, and the Mermaids are back on Wednesday, I think.
Saturday.
Saturday, Saturday. The Mermaids are back on Saturday, so if people remember, last time they were here, it was a long line and very popular, so that's something I'm sure lots of people are looking forward to. I don't see any delegations here. We have the minutes from February 27, council meeting. Any errors or omissions there? Motion to approve the minutes. Counselor Calkin, seconded by Counselor Tanner, all those in favor. Motion is carried. We are down to planning items. 233 Logan Road Development Agreement application is our first consideration.
Good evening, council. We're here this evening to talk about 233 Logan Road, better known as Michelin, and the proposed development agreement outlining a plant expansion. So the location of Michelin, in case anyone's not aware, is 233 Logan Road, where the giant star is on the map on the slide. The plant is proposed to expand towards Logan Road, in the direction of the arrow. It's a better map coming up. So here is a site plan, and as you can see, the highlighted section, that is where the plant will be expanding. The expansion is roughly 122,000 square feet, or roughly 11,400 square meters. Proposed plan is located on the northwest of the current site, extending over Logan Road. I would note that the closure of Logan Road is a separate agenda item. The building elevations are on this slide. The building will be generally in keeping with the existing building in terms of design, materials, and scope. The application is for a roughly 22,000, 122,000 square foot addition. Maximum height is roughly 15 meters above grade, is in keeping with the current plant, and there's a related road closure, as I mentioned. Zoning and current use, the current zoning is M1 Industrial, and it's located in the middle of the industrial park, as can be seen on this slide. The property is also designated industrial in the future land use map of the municipal planning strategy. The development agreement will cover items such as the permitted use, industrial conditions of permit issuance, and so there are a few pieces we're looking at getting from the applicants after the development agreement is signed regarding water, wastewater, and those sorts of things, but we don't see anything that holds us up. Landscaping and buffering will be covered, as will lighting, parking and access, sanitary sewer and water services, and stormwater management. So those last two will be looking at with engineering as well. We scheduled a public participation meeting for March 2nd, nobody registered and nobody attended. We've had no public engagement or no public comment on this development agreement to date. Start taking a look at some of the policies regarding this development agreement. The M1 zone, which covers the site, is meant to accommodate industrial uses and commercial uses as of right. It's considered, the current zone covers a broad range of industrial uses, and the intent is to provide a broad range of industrial uses concentrated in the business park. So looking at the policy aspects of the development agreement, there's compatibility of use. The building is generally in keeping with the surrounding area of the industrial park, its existing landscaping and buffering. We are looking at the adequacy of the infrastructure, emergency services, and the various other impact, potential impacts. Policy M1 is to concentrate industrial development in the Bridgewater Business Park to minimize potential disruptions. This development agreement would support that policy. It would also support the policy to require all land use conflicts, sorry, to minimize land use conflicts wherever possible. So the more policies are from the planning strategy. So we take a look at abutting boundaries, emission, health hazards, environmental impacts, and others. As to the abutting boundaries, there are some existing abutting residential properties. However, those properties are not near the proposed expansion. For the infrastructure compatibility, as I mentioned, there's a review underway. For the environmental component, we're looking at the pre and post stormwater flows to ensure that there's no additional flows generated by the proposed development agreement. The environmental impacts as well, we're looking at are, have to do with nuisances, sometimes noise, odor, dust, and other sorts of potential environmental impacts. However, this project is being regulated under the Nova Scotia Environmental Act, and so as a result, there's not a lot the town will be looking at as a result. The idea is to have one regulator, and in this case, regulator is a province. Our next steps would be to look towards a public hearing and council decision on the development agreement. We're currently at the bolded sections, planning analysis, report to council, and first consideration of the proposed development agreement. Staff recommends that council give first consideration to the development agreement for 233 Logan Road, and schedule a public hearing during the council meeting of April 11th, 2023.
Here, questions for the plenary? Pretty straightforward. This is going to have many steps, so this is the first one. Is someone prepared to make a motion?
I will, Mr. Sherman. I've moved that Town Council, Town of Bridgewater, give first consideration to the development agreement for 233 Logan Road, and schedule a public hearing during the regularly scheduled council meeting on April 11th, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers at Town Hall.
Thank you, seconded by Counselor Calkin. Further discussion? None. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. We're down to correspondence for action. We have 8.1, which is a letter from Carolyn Carr at 65 Phoenix Street regarding water and sewer. Turn that over to the CIO.
So council has enclosed with the agenda, a request that has been received. This pertains to the property on the Phoenix Street extension, so there's a map included with that to show you where that is, and also pertains to 70, the property, 70 Dufferin Street. So the request is for the town to pay the cost to extend sewer and water lines to the lot on Phoenix Street. They wish to look at adding a portion of 70 Dufferin to that lot to do a multi-unit development. The town's requirements are that connections have sewer and water in front of the lot that it wishes to serve, and the Phoenix Street extension does not have sewer and water that runs up the street. The properties on the corner are served from York Street. So it requires the water and sewer lines to be extended, and it's our policy that the landowner developer pay that expense. I have confirmed that that property on Phoenix Street does not pay sewer charges because there is no sewer connection. So that was something that was raised in the letter that they, they felt that their taxes covered that cost, but in fact, for that particular property, it's just the, the tax, there's no sewer charge because there's no connection to charge it to.
Yeah, any, are there any questions for that? So there's really no action for council to take. Counselor?
I guess, I wonder, how, do we have many properties in town that are like this, that wouldn't be able to connect to the sewer?
Yeah, they're usually, when there's, I think we've dealt with some that would have been off of Wentzell Drive, and there's, just a couple of years ago. So they're required to extend the services to in front of the lot. So anywhere that you would have that, there, it's not an uncommon situation to have arise.
Okay. So essentially, all we're doing is just, it's the same for everybody?
Yeah, the requirement's the same, no matter where it is. If the lines have to be extended to the lot, then it's the lot owner's costs and expense to do that as opposed to the taxpayer.
So I guess they just, they thought that perhaps they were being treated differently, but the reality is that, no.
That's correct.
That there's a misunderstanding of policy.
Yeah, and 70, 70 Dufferin would have a charge because there's a connection there.
Right, okay. Any other questions on that one? Counselor McDonald?
Will there be a response to them, just to let them know that this is the standard practice?
Yeah, that has been, they've been advised of that, but I do believe they're just asking and putting forth their, their position to, to council for consideration. If council takes no action, then we'll advise the individuals that are, reinforce what our procedure is, and that no action's been taken by council, so that they would have to extend the lines if they wish to develop that lot.
Any other questions on that? Okay, 8.2, we have a tax question.
So this is to request that council waive the interest fees that have been charged on a tax account. So you can see there that I believe that these are $16. The individuals paid their tax bill online with online banking, and as, there's a copy of the tax bill attached that notes that we do have a notice by the payment amount that indicates that if you are paying online, allow a few days, because depending on the bank, it could take a couple days for it to be processed, and our system will generate the interest after the due dates pass. So we don't have the ability to vary that based on a two-day or three-day, depending on when the transaction goes through at the bank. So residents are advised of that if they choose that payment option. And in this case, the resident in the case that they did pay online by the due date, but that, that was the day, it was due, and per our notice, it can take a couple days before the bank processes that to make payment to the town. So interest was applied. Our Director of Finance does note that we were late in getting the billing out at one point afterwards, and that there was approximately 64 cents that would have resulted from having our statement sent out late, and of course, that would be eligible if council wished to waive the 64 cents, but the $16 would not be unique to this property, and any taxpayer paying online has the same warning and could have the same interest charged if they waited till the last day.
Any questions? Counselor?
I guess I'm wondering why, why is it that we do that? Like, I know that I've paid bills on the day they were due, not only the town, but other organizations, and I've not charged any late fee. Why is it we do that?
Well, it's our due date, so our system's set up to calculate interest after the due date passes and hasn't been paid, so it's, it's a calculation that our, our financial software does. And it depends on the bank. Some banks, they will go in that day, and other banks, there's, there's a bit of a delay, so.
The processing time is on the, on the bank side, so as explained this morning in our morning meeting. The bank that I use was four days to make a credit card payment, and the bank that my wife uses arrives instantaneously, two different banks. But on the, on both websites, it does say, please allow three to four days for processing. So I know that the individual in question here wanted to know why it took so long on our end, but it's from when they click submit to when we receive it, which is not on our end.
And we don't have any way to identify when you pay at your bank. We get the notice when it goes in our account.
Because of the software we're using?
Because that's how the bank, yeah. That's when the payment hits our account, so it could be a couple days on the bank end before it hits ours. Maybe the same day, depending on bank.
Counselor Donald?
I don't think that that's unique to this bill. I think I've seen on bills from other companies that you should be aware that it can take a few days for online payments to process. So I don't, I don't think it's just because of our software. I think it's, I think it's fairly widespread. You may not see interest charged because maybe it's not charged the same way.
Any other comments or questions? So unless...
But Tammy, just to follow, they could have it in their accounts set up with a town that it could automatically come out of their bank account, like mine does?
For taxes, if, well, depending on how they pay their taxes.
If you wish to, rather than...
If, if it's a known amount, so like, you have it with your mortgage or that type of thing, it comes out, that, that's, that payment's made before the due date?
Yeah.
If you're just going online to pay, and you're set up with an online account to pay, then yeah, it depends, you wait till the last day, there's a rest, it won't get processed by the bank for a day or two, and hit our account, it'll hit our accounts late.
But they could contact the town and set it up so that they can pay their account monthly, or at the due date, right, from their computer?
Yep.
There's another option?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we are, we will refund the 64 cents or at least credit it, I said?
The 64 cents.
The 64 cents, I believe Kim is saying that that one would be eligible to be forgiven. The 16 cents would be, or $16, so it would be something that would be outside of our practice and something council would have to authorize, but it would not be something common to this, would be, wouldn't be unique to this account and be a common issue.
Well, then your due date doesn't, isn't your due date?
That's right.
Right, so if you're, if you're, if you have a due date and you, and it's three, four, five, six days later, then that becomes your new due date, and then that, what happens when you're two or three days past that is you have to set a date. Counselor Calkin?
I'm just having a hard time interpreting this. It doesn't make sense to me. So, like, I don't pay my bills early, and let's say, for example, a cell or internet, I pay it on the due date, and it may take one, two, three, four days to reach the actual bill payee, but I can't recall ever getting a late payment charge for that. Doing it that way, so, I don't really know if it's on the bank's end.
The time it takes to, for us to receive it would be on the bank's end. The policy to charge the interest starting on the, the day after it's due is, that is our policy. So that, that could be the difference between the two, but in both, in both cases, right, the, the corporation or the town is not receiving it for a number of days.
So our interest is applied the last day of the month in the evening, so after the close of business, so. So the money would have to have been received by the town prior to that, or interest is applied?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just reading a little blurb here. According to one bank, saying, once you submit your bill payment via online banking, the money will be debited from your account immediately, and depending on the bill payment company's processing policies, the payment may take up to four days to process. So this is coming from a bank where it's saying, the bill payee, in this case, it'd be us, the Town of Bridgewater, it's on our, on our end as far as how, how well we process it.
It's a deposit into our account, into our, like, so into the account, so it comes from the bank. And that's, that is why we have the notice on the tax bill saying, allow some time. I think it's up to three business days it could take before payment is received by the town.
I think Jennifer was next?
I was just gonna say, I don't see this being much different than if I mail my bill on the day that it's due. I know it's not going to get there on time, so I have a certain level of responsibility to be aware of how long it's going to take for my...
to be aware of how long it's going to take for my bill to actually get paid.
Just wondering, like, I know if you do online bill payment, it gives you confirmation in the date, but I'm just thinking, if it was a weekend, for example, I know it wouldn't be until the next business day, which would have been the Monday. I don't have a calendar in front of me.
So the twenty-ninth was a Thursday.
Okay. I'm just wondering if that was the scenario. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. I don't know about the, the practicalities of how this could work, but I, I, I wouldn't mind if the, the policy was changed to, I mean, when somebody, if they're paying a bill in good faith online, like, to me, when you make a payment, that's, that's when you made the payment, not because of, like, it's not any error to me of the person paying the bill, they've, they've given away their money. It's not coming back on the day it's due. To me, I, if the, if the software or the, it could be a, somehow a grace period to take into account when the payment was made, I'd like to see that, but I don't know. Maybe it's not possible.
I think our Director of Finance is just indicating to me that we, we, there's no way for us to identify, or, you know, when you've made that payment with your bank. Our, our trigger is when it hits us, right? So that would be, whether that can be coordinated with the bank, but I suspect it would be a process that would have to be created in there to identify if yours came in two days later, then you'd have to go back and work with the bank to see when you made that payment.
So nothing on our end says, they're saying they, they made the payment on the twenty-ninth, so a day before it was due, but there's nothing on our end to indicate that they, and we received on the fourth. So there's nothing to indicate that they actually made the payment on the twenty-ninth, on our end, right? So that's what you're saying is.
That's right. We can't identify the accounts, not that, that applies to.
Because that would have been, otherwise, that would have been an easier.
Yeah, but I guess it's not possible.
It's frustrating. Counselor Thorburn.
Last time I, I think it's a banking issue, that they're the ones that should be paying that sixteen dollars. They caused it. She paid it on time. They took four days to process it. And they should be paying the sixteen dollars. They had their money in time.
I just got a message from someone saying, pay my Nova Scotia Power bill four days before the due date, otherwise there's a late fee. No. I don't know, I don't know. I, I, I understand the person's frustration, and they're in, they paid it on time.
Yeah.
And I don't know if there's a mechanism for, for them to go back to their financial institution to say, you know, I clicked, like, a day before it was due, I clicked pay, and you took, in this case, five days to, there's a weekend in there, but took many days to get the payment to the institution. So whether it was the town, or Nova Scotia Power, or, or a credit card, I do sympathize, because in their eyes, they had, they paid it twenty-four hours before it was due, and it arrived, whatever, more than forty-eight hours late, so. But I understand the staff, they don't, they don't know. The system just says it was due on the thirtieth, it arrived on the fourth, and what happened in between there is between the financial institution and the person who paid, so. In terms of the sixty-four cents of interest in the staff, just, they can do with that.
Yeah, we can.
Counselor. Any other comments on, on that? Okay. We'll be down to reports and recommendations. We have the Regional Diversity Equity and Inclusion Coordinator. So this is something that the municipalities in Lunenburg County have been working on together. So as people know, we have our Anti-Racism Task Force in Bridgewater. Lunenburg has an Anti-Racism and Inclusion Committee. Municipal District of Lunenburg has a committee as well. And so the, the, the idea behind this was to, while we recognize that racism doesn't stop at a county line, so using our resources together, one of the things that came out of a lot of these committees was the need for a professional staff person who is, who is trained in dealing with issues in the community. It can be quite a lot for folks that are already themselves dealing with racism or issues of inclusion or lack of inclusion in their own personal lives, then also have to deal with them on a committee level. And so there would still be a committee, a regional one, but the, the idea here is that a staff person can be that resource for the five municipalities. So this is Municipal District of Lunenburg, opposite Town of Bridgewater, Town of Lunenburg, Mahone Bay, and the District of Chester, all working together. So this isn't new. This has come before council before. I think we, last year, I thought we had put this in the budget, or we certainly discussed putting in the budget, but the terms of reference are now here, and, and now the financial ask for the budget. So if you had anything to add.
Just, just that the terms of reference are clear in terms of what the mandate of this regional committee would be in their composition, so that there would be representation from the municipal units, as well as appointments done for members at large. And they would be working with the, the staff and the council, the municipal units, to address systemic racism and equity in government policy, and then looking at our procedures, our events, all, all of our operations and within our community. The District of Chester would be the host, and they would, they would basically host the employee. And that this would be funded on a, on a formula similar to how we fund the active, or the accessibility coordinator. And so you can see that our costs are noted, that it's approximately thirteen thousand. It has been slightly adjusted once it was reviewed, so it's, we have twenty thousand proposed in the budget, which would allow for our share of both the coordinator, as well as the, the committee activities that would be used to fund committee meetings and some other activities as well.
Any questions from members of council? Can I make a motion? Yes, please.
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the terms of reference for a regional anti-racism and anti-discrimination advisory committee as presented, and that Town Council approve funding for a regional coordinator for a term of twenty-four months to support the committee and the regional municipal units in implementing anti-racism and anti-discrimination initiatives, with the town's contribution being estimated at thirteen thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, and that the C A O will be directed to assist in the development of an agreement to hold on to terms of this regional initiative.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fugier. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you so much. Down to nine point two, Bridgewater Museum Commission, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four operational budget. So it is budget season, so we'll get a few more of these, I imagine, to refer them to the budget process, but I don't know if there's any questions or comments on that. Counselor.
I'm not sure if it can be answered this evening, but I noticed it looks to me, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, but all, almost all of the revenue sources are decreased this year. Does anyone know any reasoning around why they're, they've all decreased?
I don't know if that's a question that.
So in terms of sponsorships and fundraising?
Admissions, sponsorship, fundraising, program rentals, grants went up, and the town's contribution, gift shop sales, other revenue, yeah, other revenues. I think it's everything but the town and grants for students.
Our man, many hats can probably answer.
Yeah. The long and short answer is, counselor, that it's a readjustment of the baseline numbers to reflect the decrease that we've seen the past number of years through COVID.
So COVID obviously decreased numbers.
That's right.
There's an expectation that it will continue to decrease?
No, but the budget was done, you know, with a small C conservative vision, you know, anticipating that some of those numbers hopefully will bounce back this year, but without knowing for sure that that's going to happen, we wanted to make sure that we were budgeting accordingly and not artificially inflating those numbers.
Other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Counselor Thorburn, thank you.
I would move that Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater refer the budget for the Bridgewater Museum Commission to the twenty-three, twenty-four budget deliberations.
Thank you. Seconded, Counselor Conklin. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Our next item is, you have Building Inspection Monthly Report for February. Things continue to be busy, so I don't know if there's any questions there. If you do, you can refer them to the C A O, to, to staff, but they're there for your, and of course, the public's perusal. Appointments to the Energized Bridgewater Advisory Committee. So we just have stakeholder member being appointed, and I don't know if anyone's prepared to make that motion. Counselor Caldwell, thank you.
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater appoint Ann Kukmer as a resident member, and Clean Foundation as a housing sector stakeholder organization member to the Energized Bridgewater Advisory Committee, with both appointments having a term of three years, ending March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, for the committee's terms of reference.
Wonderful. Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Thorburn. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. We have nine point five, which is Lunenburg County Senior Safety Program Monthly Report for February. I know I sound like a broken record, but I don't know what we do with this organization, the number of people that they serve. They're an invaluable resource, and so that's there. I would encourage the public to take a look at that, and if there's any way that you can help, you can reach out to them. I'm sure they could, they could definitely use help in terms of whether it's funds or other kind of supports, so information's there. And then we have the March sixth discussion briefing notes. So again, just remind to the public that all, that this whole agenda, all, all the documentation that council gets is also available for the public on the Town of Bridgewater website under Town Council, and then agendas and minutes are there. And so everything we're discussing there tonight is in one very long, sometimes it's hundreds of pages, but you can, you can find each section documents there, including this. So at the last discussion session, we talked about town's one hundred and twenty-fifth birthday, which will be exciting next year. And we talked about the Bridgewater Transit Engagement Report, so there's, there's a lot of information on that, and then some proposed organizational changes. So a lot of these will come back to council. Some soon, and some will be a while if we can kind of map these out, but all of that, all of that information is there for the public to, to review. I don't know if you have any questions with those. All right. And so that was a very quick meeting, because we are at the end of our agenda. I have a motion to adjourn. Please. Counselor Thorburn, seconded by Deputy Mayor Fugier. We are adjourned.